We have written from the Committee of the Whole on Bill 20. And the list of senators who would like to speak on it are Senator Yamashita, Vice Speaker Cruz, Speaker Pangolinan, and Senator Rodriguez. And if you are, if there's anybody else who would like to speak, please let me know before then I give it to the author to close. Okay, so on Bill 20 then, on the main motion, Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for allowing me another opportunity to speak on Bill number 20-32 as amended by the author and substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, Health Insurance Reform, Economic Development, and Senior Citizens. Madam Speaker, for the last few days, actually starting in January into March, and then last week, we had a public hearing again, a second one on this bill. And then we are in Committee of the Whole on Friday for several hours. We have been talking over and over about what this measure attempts to do. And what this measure attempts to do, Madam Speaker, defines a revenue stream to dedicate to GMH to help them whittle down on their debt, to help them find some monies to infuse into our only hospital at this time. Well, actually, there's another hospital on Guam, but we, most of us are not able to go there. There's a new hospital joining the neighborhood, and that has yet to open, maybe another two years, we hope. But in the meanwhile, the Guam Memorial Hospital is there for our families. And certainly, repeatedly, we have heard the challenges that our Guam Memorial Hospital faces. And with our latest director, Mr. Vega, no, Mr. Verga, I'm sorry, Mr. Verga, has described their challenges, and he's come down here several times. I think I've been in the public hearing room maybe four times that he's been there, to describe what they're doing and what they're not doing. And certainly, many of our colleagues in this hall have helped him understand what they need to do better at. And I think that at every juncture, they've admitted that they can do better, they've admitted their mistakes, and they're looking toward a working partnership with everybody on this island to deliver supports and services of high-quality health. Madam Speaker, from the last week alone, I spoke with two of our colleagues in our previous life, in our education world, who had to take a family member off island to get the kind of care that their family member needed. And it's, when someone is sick, it's how do you deal with that? When you go here and you can't find the kind of care that you need, or you find care and they say you need to go somewhere else because we can't give you that kind of care here, then the other issues open up. Who's going to pay for it? Travel, hotel rooms? And I know today, there are certain options and opportunities that we can avail ourselves to, but wouldn't it be even better if we were able to just simply drive to Timouning and find that kind of care? And unless we give the Guam Memorial Hospital the kind of tools, hold them to their standards, and have them meet the expectations needed, that kind of opportunity that we can find in Timouning is going to dissipate, it's going to disappear more and more and more. This is, as the author of this measure has stated, is but a small step in trying to help them get what they need. One of the things they need is funding. We know the makeup, the demographics of our patients who go to our hospital. Many of them are not paying patients. But like our public school system, they take all, as they should. And as other members in this body are trying to find other ways to fix those kind of payment structures of how to have those families who need, ensure that they can walk in and get the kind of support. Right now, the hospital needs more money. So this certainly has been controversial. We started with the health insurance companies, industry, paying some money, and that created an outcry to which the author changed it to a stream of revenue from gaming machines. And that whole notion of are gaming machines legal has certainly hit the floor, and we've heard different opinions, we've heard different perspectives, we've looked for opinions, we haven't found the opinions, we've heard of memorandums, we've heard of letters. And as I said in the Committee of the Whole last week, Friday, Madam Speaker, I was able to look at 11 GCA and see that indeed poker machines were repealed, those are not legal. But there's a host of gaming machines that are legal, from pinball to machines that have video capabilities. And these are all, last time I played pinball, I know that there were whistles and bells, and I knew that was all driven by electricity, because that's the way that works. And so what this author has done, Madam Speaker, has found that after a case was dismissed, that in April, 217 machines have been licensed, have been licensed by revenue and taxation. After revenue and taxation had promulgated rules and regulations, and in April, $63,500 have been submitted as business privilege taxes. And as this is legal money, Madam Speaker, it seems right to me that we can say that this money can be identified and go towards the hospital. Now, certainly, this isn't going to resolve all the woes, but as the author of this measure said, it is a first step. I could go on about this whole gambling issue, but I really don't think the gambling issue is the real issue of Bill 20-32, Madam Speaker. The real issue is finding some money to help Guam Memorial Hospital. These gaming machines are legitimate, they are licensed, and they are paying their business privilege tax. And indeed, if we are to address the gambling issue at that time, it would certainly rise to talk about all the issues that are surrounding us, and how that does need to be addressed if somebody is going to carry that particular flag. But at this moment, Madam Speaker, I do stand in full support of Bill number 20-32. It's a step to find some revenue, it's a step to give a tool to the hospital and their board to move forward and do a better job at providing health quality for all of our families on our island, in particular, in particular, Madam Speaker, for those of us who cannot go to the Philippines, or Hawaii, or California, or Texas, to find the kind of care that we need to live the rest of our life in a healthy and happy manner. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, I recognize Vice Speaker Cruz.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I was going to wait, but I'll be honest, I think that the first motion I'd like to make is to recommend that this bill go back to committee. Madam Speaker, if we are indeed sincere about wanting to provide the hospital with money to pay its bills, to take care of the patients that everybody's been talking about, then this bill is not the answer. You saw four attorneys sitting up there with different opinions of what this is going to be. You heard the Attorney General say that he is not finished yet, that there could still be, and he is planning to bring another suit. This is not fully resolved. Regardless of whether or not there is an opinion written, or an opinion that he wouldn't, that John Camacho would not release, this issue is not resolved. This is going to be back in court before the end of the summer. And the saving, the mona from heaven that we think that we're going to be providing to the hospital today is specious and speculative. I know of no bank that's going to give a loan on this. There isn't a bank on this island who would give $25 million, $30 million to the government of Guam and say, oh yes, I'll accept this payment, the fees and the taxes that you're going to collect from gaming machines that have been challenged for the last five years, that's on and off over the last 15 years, and the Attorney General is saying that it's still not resolved. No thank you. Find another bank, because it's not going to be this bank. So my first motion is for us to be honest as to whether or not this is really going to provide any money at all, and whether any bank is going to give it to the government of Guam with this as the repayment, source of repayment. And if so, let's move on with the other bills. So my first motion, Madam Speaker, is to make a motion that this bill be sent back to committee and find a source of revenue that would generate income immediately and continuously.
On the amendment.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I rise to objection to that. We've had that object, we had that motion previously, and, you know, I don't understand why we're trying to suppress discussion on this legislation. And so, you know, I mean, everyone has their positions here, let's discuss it, and let's vote on this measure, you know, whether you like it or not. And this whole notion about no bank is going to accept this as a revenue, I mean, some of these people that operate these devices have been around for 50, 60 years. They're banking on our local banks. If it's good enough for them to bank, to have these businesses bank with them, why isn't it not good enough to use it as a revenue stream for the hospital? So why can't we just move forward and discuss this bill, vote it up or down? That's all I'm asking for, Madam Speaker. So I object to that motion.
There is some objections, all in favor then of sending the bill back to committee. Well, you're right, but no one's raising their hands to, oh, on the motion then, okay. The motion was to, by the Vice Speaker, is to send it back to the committee. Senator Rodriguez rose in opposition of, and yes, this is a debatable issue, but no one has raised their hands, but, okay. So if you want to speak on the motion, to send it back to committee, then I would entertain those. So, okay, so I have then Speaker Pangolinan, Senator Yamashita, is there anybody else? Okay, so on the motion, Speaker Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I think that, if I recall, they said, let's have a discussion. As a matter of fact, let's have a one-day discussion on whether or not we're going to legalize gambling on Guam. That's exactly what we had. We had one day of discussion, two days, one day for a public hearing, a second day with the Attorney General in here, who was in March, when the bill, when the original bill to help the hospital was introduced. It was with the fact that it was going to use the special assessment on health insurance. And it was very clear at that time, in the analysis that was done, that the cost would have to be passed on, that the Patient Protection and Advocacy Act, the Obamacare Act, required these health insurance companies to remove certain costs from the medical loss ratio, and some costs were not allowed to be removed from the medical loss ratio. And if they weren't removed, then they would have to be absorbed. And the health insurance companies basically said, we're not going to absorb this, we're going to pass it on. So we found out that indeed, it will not be absorbed by the insurance companies, it will pass on, and it was going to add about $370 some dollars to every family on Guam. So there was earlier statements that was made that said you can't, you know, that they would have eaten it, they couldn't have eaten it, they wouldn't have, and they weren't willing to. And so we had a different discussion. Then a new bill was introduced. And to say that we've discussed this new bill since February, March, April, May, no, we've discussed it for two days, to legalize gambling on Guam in the guise of helping the hospital. And that discussion, when my colleagues here said, let's discuss it, we are discussing it, aren't you satisfied with the discussion that was received on the day that you got four attorneys who can't agree? And the Attorney General saying, I will challenge this law. Gambling machines are illegal, and what this bill, what Bill 20 does, Madam Speaker, is it is rushing the issue. We are trying to rush the issue of legalizing these machines before the Attorney General can complete his actions. That's what we're doing. We're not discussing it, we're trying to ramrod this thing down. Discussion is that we would have to.
It's a point of order, Madam Speaker. I mean, these statements that are being made are absolutely false. The Attorney General, Madam Speaker, had five years in court, and then they decided to dismiss this case. So why are we saying now we're rushing it? We're not rushing anything.
Madam Speaker, point of order, Madam Speaker, according to our standard rules, when you rise to a point of order, you have to cite the rule that you are citing to your point of order. So what is the point, what rule is he citing to rise to a point of order?
Yes, Senator, Senator Rodriguez.
Yeah, well, you know, I can't cite exactly what citation it is, but Madam Speaker, the statements that are being made are false.
Senator, I'm going to take a brief recess, and then we'll look up for the particular section in which you want to cite then your point of order. The legislature is back in session. Speaker Pangolinan, you still have the floor. And maybe I should just reiterate this again, is that during this second reading, this is the time in which you're able to have the opportunity to get up and speak on the bill, debate on the bill, make references to your sources if you need be, just so long as we keep those to that, and not anything that, to defame anyone here on the floor, otherwise you will be ruled out of order. So, Speaker Pangolinan, you may continue.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I once again reiterate that we're supposed to have a discussion on the bill. Now, the position is, let's get the discussion and let's get a vote as well. We've had two days on discussion. Madam Speaker, what this bill is attempting to do in the timeframe we're trying to do it is to rush this bill through so that we, as a result of the bill that is currently on this floor, try to legalize these gaming machines before the Attorney General can complete the actions that he is doing right now, so that we will moot his case. We will, we are attempting here to legalize these machines, so by the time the Attorney General moves forward on rescinding these licenses, on pulling the machines, that it'll be mooted. That's what we're attempting to do in the timeframe we're trying to do right now. We're not trying to help the hospital here. I think there's another issue that is fundamental to what we're trying to do and how we're going to help the hospital, and that's to legalize these machines. You know, we're being, you know, to adopt what is in here that moves, that moots the Attorney General's case and makes these machines illegal. I mean, these illegal machines, legal. Madam Speaker, I know people are saying there's no court decisions and so forth, but I could swear that, you know, since we all kind of listened to Ray Gibson, I think his advice this morning was, all of you guys out there who say there are no legal opinions, no court decisions, talk to Joey Doinas and Jackie Marotti, because they were in the radio station, you know, I think Friday, where they actually were reading from court opinions that said the machines are illegal machines under the current law. What this bill will do is we'll make them legal. It's as simple as that. And we're trying to, once again, like I said, moot the Attorney General's position in this as he's moving forward to not issue these licenses. The Attorney General very clearly stated that he issued a legal memorandum of guidance to Rev. Tax, that the machines are illegal. When they dismissed the case, the cases were, the case was to force Rev. Tax to issue licenses. Those were the two cases, the major underlying elements of those cases. And they weren't stuck in five years because the courts were saying, no, the machines are illegal. They were going back to court to give them due process of removing these licenses, that you had to have the administrative hearings to remove these licenses. That's what the ruling was, that the machines are illegal, but in order to revoke the licenses, you have to go through the administrative process. And so Rev. Tax, the Attorney General, and the owners of the machines basically agreed they would dismiss all of the cases, the two cases that would force Rev. Tax to issue the machine, to issue the licenses. And they were, they dismissed that, and so therefore, what you had was a decision of the court that the machines are illegal, and that in order to revoke those licenses, you have to give them administrative process. So it, to me, we're trying to delude ourselves when we're saying, oh my God, no way, no court, nothing. The reading of the law is that the machines is codified in terms of the laws of Guam right now, make them illegal. And of course, there's a difference of opinion there, you know. So what this would do would be negate those court decisions, basically, because it would then make it legal. And that's really what we're talking about here. And what is the effect of this thing, Madam Speaker? What is the effect of it? Shouldn't we have more public discussions? Madam Speaker, when we decided, over the last 10 years, we've had five, six initiatives to legalize gambling on Guam? We have had initiatives with public education campaigns, debates within our community by supporters and non-supporters of the different sides of the issue. And we've had a traveling show in the different forums, the different villages, the different civic organizations that debated the issue of gambling. And we're not talking about just gambling with casinos, no. The last initiative was for bingo. Bingo, Madam Speaker. That was the last initiative. So when we're talking about bingo, and now we're talking about gambling machines, don't you think we should have a public discussion and forums? That's where the discussion should occur, because we haven't had that discussion again on these gambling machines. And to say that, oh no, we've all discussed it. The bill as is wasn't even on the website until the public hearing was over. So when we say, oh, we announced that we were doing this, yes, you did, but when you go to the legislative website and you look at what bill's under discussion, it's the bill for the health insurance until after the public hearing. So we haven't had adequate notice to the public on what is the subject matter of the bill that was going to be discussed. And there were those who rely on going there, and then when they look at it, hey, it's health insurance, I don't need to go down there. That discussion was already had, that bill was withdrawn. What are they talking about? So, Madam Speaker, once again, I really believe that if my colleagues are sincere, that we put this here so we can discuss it, then let's not act on it. The discussion is not adequate at this time with regards to the general public on the position of legalizing gambling machines on Guam. It's just not adequate, it really is. My colleagues, I can't understand it. My colleague says, let's have a discussion on a bill that was introduced, had a hearing, and on the legislative floor the next day. Madam Speaker, why is it that when Senator San Nicolas had a bill that had a public hearing plus eight days of public comment availability, my colleagues didn't even want to discuss it? They didn't even, those who are saying, let's discuss this gambling bill today with one day after a public hearing, with no public input, given the courtesy 10 days, saying voting, let's discuss it, let's discuss it, let's put it on, I want to hear the discussion. But when Senator San Nicolas had a bill that had a public hearing, eight days for public comment, they didn't, my colleagues here said, no, let's not vote on it, let's not even discuss it, let's send it out there, back to the public for more hearings. Yet they want to discuss, and not only discuss, but they want to discuss and vote on a gambling bill with just one day notice, one day hearing, and back on this floor. What is the difference? Why, why the change of heart of not wanting to discuss an issue?
Madam Speaker, point of information. The point of information basically means is that you desire some information?
Yes.
Please state your point of information.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the good senator is referencing a bill that Senator San Nicolas had had, had a public hearing and eight days to do it, and Madam Speaker, that whole mechanics was very different. He had a public hearing on the bill, amended it in committee, and brought it to the floor. And the concern of this body was that that substitute version that was on the floor was not what was discussed in the public hearing. In this particular, in particular case, Madam Speaker, we, I amended the bill, put it out there, had a public hearing, and, Madam Speaker, the, this issue about not being on the website, when did we put an amended version on the website? It's only when it's reported out. And so, you know, the information I'm asking is that if he can just, if he can just clarify and make sure that, you know, don't be, you know, misleading people, say it for what it is.
Yeah, please remember that when a point of inquiry or point of information is used to, you know, get an information and not necessarily to debate the issue, so, and also it should be based on procedures, or based on our rules as well, so. And in this case, yes, we always try to say is that you stick to the issue, and there's that fine line, of course, where you're doing some comparison, so, therefore, I mean, there's, there's really no parliamentary procedures in this case, it is basically, you know, so long as you use it as part of your debate, and I've allowed that, you know, before as well, so. Senator, Mr. Speaker, you may continue.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my point on the building on the website is, the bill that was on the website was for health insurance. The bill that was being publicly heard was for legalized gambling. That's my point. that was being publicly heard was for legalized gambling. That's my point. What should have been on the website when the notice for a public hearing was announced should have been the bill for legalized gambling. So even from the very beginning, we didn't give the public adequate notice. That's my whole point on that matter. So anyway, Madam Speaker, once again, I go back. We have something here that we said, you know, that I believe really is not adequate at this time in terms of the receipt of public input on the issue of legalized gaming machines on Guam, to be able to vote on this thing if we are really concerned about discussing the issues and giving the public the greatest opportunity. This is, this is, this will change our community as it has in the past when we've had these machines. When we saw what the effects of these machines are, it changed our community. And I think the change in our community, the general public's not aware of it because of the way that this bill has been rushed and presented. And now we're being asked to pass it all in a matter of three or four days. I just think that is a huge disservice to the public. It certainly is a failure and of our responsibility to do so. We all want to help the hospital. I certainly want to. I continue to rack my brain every single day trying to figure out a way to help the hospital. And we have. This legislature is providing over $14 million in direct subsidy to the hospital in this fiscal year's budget. $14 million in subsidy. So it's not like we're all turning our backs on the hospital. We are scrimping dollars and pennies to give money to the hospital, and we did so to the tune of $14 million in this budget bill. So we are all doing our share. We are all doing our part. It's not enough. You're right. It's not enough. But this is not the way to do it, and this is not how we should do it. I just don't believe that the people of Guam, you know, are best served by doing what we're trying to do for the hospital in this fashion, in this manner, with this subject matter, in terms of, it's really just ramming it down their throats in terms of legalized gaming on Guam for these machines. And I just don't think that the public, having voiced its position on the issue of gambling and gaming, even to the tune of electronic bingo, these machines are just like electronic bingo machines. And that was the initiative in the last one, to put electronic bingo on. These machines, basically, in terms of the way they facilitate bets and payouts, are basically the same with regards to electronic bingo. It's gone in a flash, the money and so forth, Madam Speaker. And the way we're doing this with regards to no gambling commission, no rules and regulations in terms of how they're going to be assessed, I just don't think that, there are no rules and regulations. Everybody's saying that Rev. Tax promulgated rules and regulations. That is not a fact. The, or, well, they did. There's a challenge, and that's part of the basis for the challenge in the court, was that these rules and regulations are not duly promulgated and not passed. That's the other issue here. To, so to say that they, yes, they had the hearings, they filed the thing, but are they duly promulgated according to the requirements of law? The Attorney General's saying, "No." Very clearly he told us. So you can't license these machines under those rules and regulations. So what does this do? It removes those rules and regulations from applying to this machine. Again, are we trying to help the hospital, or are we trying to legalize these machines? We're trying to legalize these machines. That's the discussion we should have. And I just think that, you know, it's kind of like, what did they say in the last campaign, you know, lipstick on a pig, you know. So we're trying to put lipstick on the gambling pig and say, "We're all doing our share, and we're doing the best we can." Madam Speaker, you know, it's no secret, I have struggled over the last three to four years dealing with medical issues as well. I am burdened with debt dealing with medical issues, Madam Speaker. I know what it's like to have to go off island to get medical care. I know what it's like to rack up, you know, $40,000, $50,000 in credit cards. Thank God. Thank God. So, to try and say we're insensitive to the needs of our community with regards to medical care on Guam, I am struggling with that every single day, not only from a health point, but from a financial point. So I know what it's like, Madam Speaker. And I just don't think that this proposal here is going to provide any relief to those people who are struggling to find adequate health care either here or in Guam, that this proposal is not the way to do it, Madam Speaker. It'll burden the same people we're trying to help, is how this proposal, I believe, will pan out. It'll suck money from those individuals who struggled to get off island to now go here because of the effects of it. And what gambling is, it's an addiction. And these people will take money that could go to medical care and pump it into those machines with a hope and promise and a prayer that they'll hit it big and maybe, maybe get out from under. It will not, Madam Speaker. We have seen that happen in our community. We've seen it happen in communities where gambling is based upon the local residents and the effects of those local residents. We don't have enough visitors to do this. This will be supported by our own local people who will take much-needed money from their needs for health care, for food, for medicine, for all the basic necessities of life, school uniforms, school lunches. That's what this has. We've seen it happen in the past. We got rid of one of them in the poker machines. We've seen an abatement of this effect from the last five years, because the machines have been stuck in legal, in the legal battle. And we see that, what it, what its effect is, and when it comes back, Madam Speaker, we're going to hurt the same people we're trying to help in helping GMH. And I just don't think this is the proper way to do it. And that's why I think we need greater discussion in our community on the effect that this bill will have. And that's why I support the motion to refer the bill back to committee, and let's have some real public discussion on this matter and this issue, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Mischin.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, what is is. What is is. What is is that 11 GCA right now lists some gaming machines that are legitimate. What is is that we have 217 machines that are properly licensed by revenue and taxation, that paid $63,500 for business privileged taxes, and in April paid $108,500 in licensing fees. What is is. If indeed, the AG is going to move forward and make his case and win the case, and then that becomes different. But currently, Madam Speaker, what is is. The current motion on the floor is to return it back to committee. The mover of that motion said, "Which financial institution will use this funding source as a funding opportunity?" Madam Speaker, I suggest we won't know until that happens. And so, what is is. And this is what we have. The bigger issues that are being talked about certainly are issues that I think everybody would be open to discussing. But right now, the measure in front of us is taking a revenue stream from properly licensed machines that are out throughout the community. These businesses have supported and helped different endeavors and different initiatives throughout our community, and it's a small amount. Of course, we've all said it's not going to resolve the whole issue. Of course not. But right now, it's a small step. And what is is. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Spisho, you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'll speak on the motion to bring this bill back to committee by saying that I recognize procedural moves when I see it, and I appreciate these kinds of procedural moves to either thwart the bill or want to do something entirely with the bill from what was presented to the floor. Madam Speaker, when the good mover of this bill first made the motion to move this bill to the third reading file with discussion, immediately there was an objection. And there was someone else presiding, and that person, our good friend, Senator Barnes, she called for a vote. And as you know, Madam Speaker, what should have happened in the course of the legislative process is when the mover of the bill gets up, or the sponsor of the bill gets up to make the procedural motion to move the bill to the third reading file with discussion, then they go to the next senator, and this one senator all stood up immediately and said, "I object." And so, what could have happened then is said, "Your objections are registered. We're just going to go down the line and see if there are any other speakers." And so, what happened instead, there was a vote. And the first vote that came up, I want to question why we didn't have eight votes at the time, but when that objection was put to a vote, there wasn't eight votes. And so, Madam Speaker, I immediately did a motion to reconsider, and based on the motion to reconsider, we were able to get eight or nine votes, I believe. Then after that, Madam Speaker, the sponsor of the bill had to renew his motion, again, to place on the third reading with discussion. Understanding that the motion could have been, I moved to place in third reading, and if there's no objections, or if there's an objections, and there's eight votes at the time, gavel down, the bill is in third reading without any discussion. And so, when that motion was renewed to move the bill to third reading with discussion, with discussion, Madam Speaker, that's the resonating theme of what I'm saying now, is with discussion, the same objector rose and rightfully stated his objection. And so, the presiding officer was going to call for a vote again, and then I pleaded with her that instead of calling for a vote, that what she should do instead is recognize that member who has that right to object, his objections, then ask if there's any other senators wishing to speak on the bill. And so, so she did that, Madam Speaker, and then throughout the course of that discussion, there was some concern with respect to wanting to bring the Attorney General in here to offer his perspective, under the notion that the Attorney General, whether he was noticed or not, he wasn't at the public hearing, so we don't have the privilege of his legal guidance. He is the chief legal officer of this island, of this government of Guam. And so, what we wanted to do is also include revenue and tax, and in order to get a balanced perspective, we also wanted to include Attorney Randy Cunliffe, who's been very public behind this issue and contending that these machines were licensed and they were improperly revoked, and that company did not have the legal benefit of an administrative remedy, and so that's why they were in court. And so, when we resolved into the committee of the whole, Madam Speaker, it was such a fascinating experience. Again, as the six terms that I've served in here, I'm still getting fascinating experiences. And one of those fascinating experiences was how you had the Attorney General state his position that this issue, whether these machines were legal or not, the AG's position is that they're not legal. But then on the other side of the spectrum, where you had Revenue and Taxation Director, the Attorney for the Governor, and the private attorney, explaining that when you, when you look at the criminal section of the law, it recognizes that these machines are not legal in an older law. Then she explained Public Law 26-52, and look it up again, Madam Speaker, Public Law 26-52 had a notwithstanding, any of the provision of law that required Revenue and Taxation to promulgate rules and regulations to regulate those machines that were licensed at that time. And so, in due course of Revenue and Taxation promulgating these rules and regs in the 27th Guam Legislature, the 27th Guam Legislature at that time didn't act on those rules and regs, so it was a default to approval. It was adopted. And when those rules and regs were adopted sometime later, much, much later, after they were in court, the Revenue and Taxation recognized that they, that that is the legal authority now for them to go and license those machines. And so, what we've been able to determine in Friday's committee of the whole is that's the thing that changed. And what changed was those rules and regs were codified, were codified, and Rev. Tax recognized that those rules and regs were codified, so they issued their license. And also, if you want to question the author's motivations, I want to say, Madam Speaker, that there's, I don't believe anybody, anybody, even Machiavelli could have planned this out the way it's being planned out, where originally there was a bill that was introduced to provide, to assess a 4% tax on health insurance companies. And we all know what the public sentiment was on that bill, but more importantly, we all know what the health insurance company's position was on that bill. They said that if you assess us 4%, we're going to pass it on to the, to those who have our health insurance. And then that's where the pushback occurred, because it would have been very difficult to tax people 4% when their health insurance premiums are already at an all-time high. And so, if you look at the chronology of events and how those machines were licensed, how the good mover of this initiative, this legislation, recognized that this is revenue that's going to be coming into the government of Guam, and based on the actual collection experiences of past years, it's quite conceivable that this revenue would be enough to do two things. One, to give the hospital the much-needed cash infusion, but more importantly, give the hospital the opportunity and ability to go out and get a loan to finance this $23 million deficit that they have. And so, what the good author of this bill did was substituted the bill in his own committee, and then noticed that he was going to have a public hearing on this substitute bill. At the same time, he noticed the public, and we have a public, an email list that's very extensive, Madam Speaker, and so, at the same time he issued the public hearing notice for that bill, he also attached the actual copy of the bill, the actual substitute version. And if we take a look at what we do and how we notice public hearings, we do the, we just do the notice of the title, and then we refer to some website, it could be the legislature's website. But in this case, he actually noticed the public and gave the public a copy of the bill, so that they wouldn't be inconvenienced and try to find the bill somewhere else. And whether or not it was on the website certainly may have been an oversight, but again, as you know, the bills on the websites are only uploaded to the website after the committee report has been filed. Otherwise, Madam Speaker, if we're going to be filing different, different versions of these different bills as they evolve, the public will be even more confused as to, as to try to understand what version the committee is looking for at the time. And so, procedurally, you know, while there's question as to whether or not that substitute bill was on the website, those substitute versions are not uploaded until the committee report reports that bill out. And so, in this case, what the senator did was gave the public a notice, and also, Madam Speaker, gave the public the actual bill, so that there could be a second public hearing on this substitute bill, which he wasn't required to have a second public hearing on this substitute bill, because this, the first original bill was heard. And so, I guess the greatest fear is to be accused of trying to ramrod something and hide something from the public. And so, if you look at the evolution of this substitute bill, and how a second public hearing was had, and how a committee report was filed, and how that committee report, after it was filed, the bill became eligible to be placed on the agenda, and how when we were discussing it on the agenda, the first motion was to object, to kill it right then and there, and how eight members of this body said, "No, we should still have this bill in discussion," how we went into the committee of the whole and brought everybody in, how when we were going to the committee of the whole, some thinking was to just bring the Attorney General in, because we just want to hear from the Attorney General. And when we rose from the committee of the whole, Madam Speaker, you know, we could have just rose from the committee of the whole with the recommendation of the committee of the whole to pass the bill, to adopt the bill, that that would have been the findings, if that is what the findings of eight members of this body was at the time. And as you know, procedurally, when you rise from the committee of the whole, you don't discuss that bill anymore. It goes straight to the third reading file. So we would have rose from the committee of the whole. The Oversight Chair, or the Chairman of Oversight Jurisdiction, who chaired that committee of the whole, would report to the body their findings, and that's the end of the bill. That's how we do appropriation measures that go through the committee of the whole. That's how we discuss the budget when it goes through the committee of the whole. Colleagues, we never get to talk about those bills. Colleagues, we never get to talk about those bills outside of the Committee of the Whole. Once it's in the, once we've risen, it goes straight to the voting file. But, you know, the author of this bill has made it very clear that he wants every opportunity for this body to ask all the questions they want to ask and resolve in their mind what they need to resolve, to understand the issues contained in Substitute Bill Number 20. And I support that thinking to provide a legislative process that gives all of us equal bites of the apple. And that's what I want to make sure is that as we have one of those individuals in here taking a second, third, fourth, fifth bite of the apple, we want to make sure that we're a little bit balanced in our perspective, so that motivations are not raised, and so that procedures aren't challenged, or so that individuals aren't questioned with respect to what this bill really does and whether or not we're rushing this issue. I mean, I want to, I submit that this legislature, Madam Speaker, has gone a very long way in terms of noticing the public, in terms of transparency. You recall the days where we would pull all-nighters? And then it just so happens that when it's 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning on a budget bill, that's when all these amendments get to the floor, people are sleeping, they can't possibly stay up till 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning following the legislature. And so, perhaps at the time, that could have also been a procedural, a legislative tactic to try to rush these issues and ramrod these issues while the public is sleeping. And so, several things, we did a resolution that amended our standing rules that says that we cannot have session past 10:00, and we cannot start session, I believe it was beginning 7:00 in the morning. And so, from the hours of 10:01 PM to 6:59 AM, the people can sleep well knowing that their legislature is not going to be in recess. Then there's another initiative that I supported that the good appropriations chairman did was to require public hearings on Amendments to Budget Act. And once the public hearing on that amendment is satisfied, then those amendments can be entertained by way of a floor amendment. And so, when that, when his initiative passed, we also saw that the legislature didn't take advantage of the budget process by slipping amendments in that didn't have any public hearings. And so, we moved ourselves as a deliberative legislative body to a better place where the people can follow and understand exactly what we're doing, and we keep raising the bar. We've also did the 10-day customary requirement where it says if we have a public hearing, we would give a 10-day customary period for individuals to submit their testimonies to the committee. And one of the reasons why we do that, Madam Speaker, is to make sure that whatever testimony is submitted after the public hearing, that individuals who are submitting their testimony will be guaranteed that their testimony will be appended to the committee report. And whether or not the 10 days has elapsed, when the Committee on Rules gets testimonies, or when the other offices emails the Committee on Rules testimonies on their bills, whether it's for or against, or we happen to come across some articles in the paper that speak to a certain legislative bill, we always ask the clerk to pen those documents to the committee report, so that there's a good enough legislative history with respect to what the perspective was. But there's some instances, though, where, in the case of Senator Snickless, where his bill had a public hearing, he wanted to provide the 10-day customary notice, not a requirement of any law, but just a 10-day customary notice. When that legislation got to the floor, it was substantially different from what the committee had heard that couple of days earlier, eight days prior. And so, there was some concern that there should be another public hearing. I mean, I'll tell you, if the regular Bill 20 made it on the floor, and then there was a move to substitute the bill the way this bill was substituted, then certainly I would be leading the pack, saying, "We have to have another public hearing, send it back to committee." And so, the mover of this bill took all of those things into consideration, and I support his initiatives to have that second public hearing, to notice the public. At the same time, he noticed the public for the public hearing. I supported going into Committee of the Whole, and it was a little bit of a struggle to make sure that that discussion was balanced. But, you know, so if you take a look at which side, if you were to draw a line in the sand and take a look at which side has really been wanting to be transparent and open up this legislature to be an opportunity to have this kind of discussion, to, based on the discussions we had Friday, to understand and accept that these activities are licensed legal activities on Guam. Because although the Attorney General didn't want to recognize two things, the first thing, Madam Speaker, is that Public Law 2652 had a notwithstanding provision, so that kind of did away with any other conflicts they believe existed prior to the enactment of 2652. Then, secondly, Madam Speaker, when they said that those rules were not properly promulgated because it was missing an economic impact statement, Mr. Mason said he would have to recall that the time when they were doing the rules and regs for the Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan, that plan did not have an economic impact statement. But yet, the Attorney General's position at the time was whatever deficiencies exist in the course of the legislative acting, when the legislature acts, it cures all those deficiencies. And so, so after that discussion, we rose, then we're in the second reading file, then there's another motion to bring this back to committee. I say that Substitute Bill 20 met all the requirements of the open government law. This is an issue that's before the people of Guam, the media's covered it almost every single night. And the rush here, Madam Speaker, is to figure out a way to get the much-needed cash relief to the Guam Memorial Hospital. We could talk about GMH being a black hole and not collecting enough money, we can talk about GMH not billing enough money, but the bottom line is they owe $23 million to vendors. And if they don't make these vendors whole, you're going to see an even graver situation, where we can sit and talk about all the alternative funding sources and all the alternative types of revenues we can generate. But bottom line is, you've seen the media reports, at one point, GMH had only enough cash to sustain itself for 10 days, and that was seven days ago. GMH has $11 million shortfall that they had to pay immediately, but they recognized their overall shortfall is $23 million. So, while we refer this bill back to committee and let those bills pile up, let those vendors cut GMH off, you would be faced with an even alarming and graver situation, Madam Speaker, where it will force this legislature to work, we, into the hours of the morning, to figure out what else can be done. But there's a solid proposal that's being put before this body, and I say we act on it, and I rise to the, an objection to the motion to bring this bill back to committee. And depending on this motion, Madam Speaker, and the disposition of the body, I hope that we can get to discussing Bill, Substitute Bill 20, and that I hope that we can get this passed, so that we recognize that the rush behind this issue is to get the much-needed cash to Guam Memorial Hospital. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Uggan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, I've been listening very intently to some of the comments that's been shared by a number of our colleagues, and also understanding how the process has proceeded. When you look at the first public hearing, you look at the second public hearing on this particular measure, the amended version, then you bring in the attorneys and the representatives of the Attorney General's office as well as Rev and Tax. I think that that's a process that should always be utilized in a situation like this. But you know, Madam Speaker, I'm going to have to agree vehemently with one of the comments that was shared by a previous speaker. And he alluded to these mechanisms as gambling machines. And if that's the case, Madam Speaker, then we need to take, refer this particular legislation back to the committee, and let's take it out to our people. Let's take it out to the community, so our people would ultimately contribute and decide on this matter, whether it's going to be the sixth time in 10 years or 11 years. We never know, because this provision, and I commend the good sponsor in terms of making sure that there's tight language in there, this provision provides a caveat. And that restriction is that only machines that were previously authorized as a certain date would be considered to operate under this legislation. But regardless as to how we want to look at it, I think that in this case, bringing it back to our people certainly would be an appropriate route, and perhaps our people may come in and say, "This is the direction that we want to take." You know, I bring this up, Madam Speaker, because over the weekend, obviously, we had an extended weekend. But over the weekend, there were three separate individuals at two separate functions who came up to me and only asked for that. Why don't you guys, and referring to this, Aga's body, the senators, why don't you bring the legislation out to the community, so that they can ultimately actively contribute to this process? All three are at two different occasions, Madam Speaker. That was the specific request that was forwarded in my discussions with them. And you know, when that comes from our people, Madam Speaker, it reminds me of why we are in this legislative hall. Yes, we're here to make decisions, we're here to make difficult decisions. But if, in fact, this proposal is viewed as having strong forces on both sides, whether it be in support of the measure or in opposition of the measure, then I think that something like this would only help the process per virtue of giving our people that added venue, that opportunity to be able to step in and provide their comments. You know, Madam Speaker, I understand the requirements of GMH, and all of our colleagues share the same sentiments. We need to find a solution to ultimately allow GMH to extricate themselves from the $23 million debt. But you know, Madam Speaker, and I'm just going to say this, and I know that a good number of our colleagues recognize this, I received a call from a physician just prior to arriving in the session hall. And the concern that he shared is you can fix the problem short-term, but what is down the horizon may be an even greater challenge. And I think that even looking at it from his perspective, that's how we've got to look at this situation. So, Madam Speaker, I certainly stand in full support of the motion to allow the sponsor, if he so desires, to be able to take this measure out to our community and allow our people to be able to actively participate in this measure. Because I'm a believer that the more people we involve in our community in this discussion, that ultimately, the legislation is only going to be that much better when it comes out and is actually discussed and passed by this body. So, Madam Speaker, I stand in support of the motion, and I thank the good Vice Speaker for recognizing, and also the former Speaker for recognizing that perhaps moving in the direction of allowing additional community input and conversation would be the appropriate route, especially something that would have direct implications in terms of some of our community members out there. So, I certainly stand in support of the motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Uggan. Senator Barnes, you're recognized.
Please do, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, I could stand here and say in my heart that I'm not in support of gambling. I can stand here and say that I too share the concerns of the Guam Memorial Hospital and the need for the resources that it needs. But, Mr. Speaker, I want to share with you that based on the presentation that was given to us, and based on what exists today in law, I want to remind the people, whether this is regarding gambling or not gambling, the fact remains in front of us, what is stated in law today. And I just want to read, because we keep turning our heads right now, and we keep saying that if we approve this measure of taking a tax, I mean, of taking a resource that's being taxed today, that we are going to be in support of gambling. And I'm not in support of gambling, I know that. I mean, I believe that based on what has happened, me personally in the past, and based on where I worked at, I know that it could have a detrimental effect on our community. But I'm going to quote for you, based on 11 GCA Finance and Taxation, Chapter 22, Annual Exercise and Admission Taxes. And these are devices that are imposed by Rev and Tax, and on those machines that the good author of the bill wants to assess, that is legal to, it says, "A license fee is imposed on each of the following amusement devices which are operating to produce revenue in Guam on the effective date of this chapter, apportioned in accordance with Section 22207 of this chapter, or thereafter manufactured or construed, imported into Guam, maintained or permitted in Guam, and operated to produce revenue in Guam, and annually thereafter on July 1st at the rate stated." And it talks about the pinball machines, including Pachinko or similar machines that are, that can be utilized here in Guam, there's a fee of that. It talks about the coin pinball machine, it talks about the coin-activated phonograph and coin-activated music-producing machine, it talks about the kitty ride machine, it talks about each video horse or grayhound race machine, and then it talks about each videotype symbolic amusement machine, or any other amusement device that is not listed in this section. And then, on any amusement device that allows for more than one person to participate, either by use of an additional coin-slot table box screen, video screen, chair and screen monitor, or other means allowing multiple concurrent participation, an additional license fee of, and then it gives the fee amount. Also further down, it talks about that all those machines that I just mentioned earlier would be taxed if it separated an additional $50. But, on the last paragraph of this Section 22202, Madam Speaker, it says, "No slot machine or amusement device set to make progressive or automatic payout shall be licensed under this section. No gambling device as defined in 9 GCA Section 64.2B shall be licensed under this section." Madam Speaker, I'm just saying that what I believe, based on what the good author of the legislation is saying, is those machines that are being taxed and approved by Revenue and Tax right now, that he wants to use those resources. And if I'm not mistaken, those machines that he's talking about, or that's written in this present legislation right now, falls under Item F. So, I don't support gambling, but I do know that there is legislation in play right now ba- based on what the author of the legislation wants to do. Senator Masi, Madam Speaker.
Is there anyone else who wish to speak on the motion? And the motion is to send the bill back to committee. Senator Mike Suncorius, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, after the election, a lot of people came up to me and congratulated me. And on many, many occasions, they said, "Stay who you are. Don't allow the politics to change you." And I'm sure all of us have heard that. And when you hear something like that, you know, you sit back and you wonder, "What does that mean?" And for me, it comes of time, just, it's almost like water on a stone and eventually constantly it begins to shape you. And so, in previous speakers, they talked about a prior bill of mine that I had in the process here on the floor. And this bill had a hearing and it was, it had eight days. And there was an objection raised to that bill moving forward because it didn't have the full 10 days and that the substitute version of the bill was different from the version that had a hearing. And it was different, but the substitute version wasn't completely new language. It was amended versions of the existing language that had the hearing. In spite of that, there was an objection, the bill was not able to be heard that session day, and it was referred back to committee. And I was hurt at the time. I was hurt because, you know, I saw a problem, I thought I had a solution, I wanted to move it forward, and procedurally, it got moved back to committee. After it got moved back to committee, we had a hearing where legal questions were brought up that caused us to question whether or not the bill was in fact necessary and whether or not there were legal aspects that needed further clarification. And when those things came up, I had an appreciation for the fact that we did in fact move it back and talk about it more. Because if we have legal questions, we don't want to be moving something forward that could possibly have legal ramifications or trying to pass clean legislation. And so, with this bill, all kinds of legal questions have come up. Legal questions as to, are we or are we not by virtue of affecting the taxation on these devices thereafter legitimizing them into law? And I don't think a firm answer has been provided on that. There are questions as to, okay, if it's licensed, are we able to tax it? And if by taxing it, are we legalizing it? I don't think that those questions have been fully vetted. I asked in the committee of the whole if language could be inserted into the bill so that the act will not further speak to the legality of the devices, but we haven't had that language placed into the current version. So, I believe that we still have a lot of legal clarification that is necessary. If by virtue of voting on this bill, are we then legalizing the machines? Because for me, there are two perspectives here. The first perspective is either, one, we're able to tax something that has been licensed without speaking further to the legality of the item. Or, two, we are taxing something and by taxing it, we are thereafter legalizing it. Those are two very different things, Madam Speaker. And I don't believe, at least for myself, that I've been satisfied one way or the other. Personally, my interpretation of things is that we can tax something without speaking further to its legality. But I'm not 100% sure. And I'm not even talking about the merits of the funding source. I have not spoken at all about the merits of the funding source. All I'm talking about now is, are we legalizing it by taxing it? Does the language in this bill legalize it? And if it does, and that's an entirely different issue. And I believe that confusion, that uncertainty needs to be clarified. If it can be clarified that we are able to tax it without speaking further to the legality of it, then we're talking strictly about a tax issue. We're not talking about whether we support gambling or not. We're talking strictly about whether or not we are able to tax something that has been licensed even if that license is legally questionable. I don't believe that that's been clarified. So, I think that referring it back to committee to clarify that would be a good thing. Just as it was a good thing with my bill that got referred back to committee and legal questions were raised, we haven't brought it to this session, Madam Speaker. We're waiting for those legal questions to be clarified. Another value that I see in bringing it back to committee is, if this is strictly a tax issue, if we are able to clarify that by raising taxes, we aren't speaking further to the legality, we're just raising taxes, I still don't know how much to tax these things. Because as I mentioned earlier last week when we were talking about the bill, the hospital has not given us a clear amount of how much they need in order to continue current operations under the current environment or to continue operating after the new hospital opens. Yes, they need money. The question is how much? And if we're talking strictly about whether to tax these things or not, we need to know how much we need to tax them in order to meet the current needs of the hospital and the potential future needs of the hospital. To just say the hospital needs money, so let's pass this so that it can raise taxes to fund the hospital, is trying to generate revenue without knowing exactly how much we need. By referring it back to committee and giving the hospital time to finally get back to us and say, "We need X amount." After all of our cost savings are implemented, all of our revenue generating is implemented, we're still gonna be short this amount, then we'll know what to target. We'll know how much to tax. And if after giving us that information, they can also say, "By the way, after that new hospital opens, this is how bad it's gonna get." Then we'll also be able to factor that into the calculations of how much we need to tax. But absent that information, Madam Speaker, we're creating a revenue source without exactly knowing how much water to pour in. And so, I think that if going back to committee and having those two very important things resolved will be very, very healthy in the further progression of this bill. One, is voting on this bill going to further speak to the legality of the devices or not? And if not, then it's strictly a tax question. And two, if it is strictly a tax question, exactly how much of a tax question do we need to resolve? How much taxes do we need to generate from this? And until both questions can be satisfied to me, Madam Speaker, I think it would be healthy for us to revert this back to committee to get both of those answers. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on the motion? I'm speaker, then you may close on your motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. A couple of things. I wanna thank the speakers that have risen to both support my motion to send the bill back and those that spoke against it because they gave some very important history. It's true, when the hearing notices went out, that a bill was attached to the hearing notice. Madam Speaker, I'd like to read into the record the title of the bill that was attached to the hearing notice for last Thursday's hearing. "An Act to Establish a Healthcare Trust and Development Fund by Adding a New Chapter 97 to Title 10 Guam Code Annotated and Authorizing the Expenditure of Monies in the Fund for the Specific Purpose of Paying the Outstanding Debts Payable of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority and Establish and Funding a GMH Urgent Healthcare Center on the Hospital Premises for Non-Emergency Patients. This Act to be cited as, quote, 'The Guam Healthcare Trust and Development Act of 2013.'" I'm not an educator, Madam Speaker, but those of, and I wasn't young enough to have taken DI reading, but where in that title could anyone who read that title have known or had any knowledge that the bill that was going to be heard was going to legalize gambling? I ask all of you to reread the title. Whether or not you, as old as me that never took any DI, or those of you that were young enough to have been in DI reading, had any comprehension whatsoever, tell me where in that title it says, "Beware of this bill because it's going to have something about gambling." I challenge anybody to find it. And one of the speakers that spoke earlier, it's true, it is what it is. And there is something that I think needs to be made very clear. The compiler of law is like our legal counsel, Madam Speaker. The two of them can quietly give us advice, but in the end, we're the ones that have to do what we want to do on this floor, whether or not they advise us for it or against it. But they will make and have, protect themselves by having memos to us telling, "There's something that you ought to see in this." All right? And being it what it is, if anybody went to the gaming rules, the business regulations under gambling, the Guam administrative rules, and by the way, Madam Speaker, these rules were not codified the day that this bill, I mean, that this issue went to trial, I mean, was filed five years ago. And the reason why it didn't go, wasn't filed, Madam Speaker, you know about it and so do four others in here. These regulations were filed with the Guam Legislature on January the 3rd, 2003. This five of you in here that were members of that legislature on January the 3rd, 2003, in fact, I think you all took over as the majority in that legislature. That was 10 days at the Pung Song Wah. I wasn't on island because I had gone to the States for Thanksgiving and when Pung Song Wah hit, I decided I wasn't gonna return to Guam until after the power went on. But you all, five of you were members of this legislature in the 27th Guam Legislature. You know whether or not you had power those first few months, whether or not you had a copying machine. How many of you knew that this rule was, these rules had been filed? Who was legislative secretary at the time that this was filed and what, did they have as good a system as we now have of being on a tickler system telling us, "These rules were filed on such and such a date, the 90 days runs on such and such a date," and were reminded every COI meeting, "These rules are sitting, they need to be acted on." I wasn't on island at the time, but I would bet that you didn't have power, or at least if you did, it was very minimal. Madam Speaker, you know as well as I do that these biggest rules were lost somewhere in the bowels of this building since January of 2003 until good Senator Palacios somehow managed to find them last year. Yes, it defaulted because the 90 days may have run. Those who were in 27th Guam Legislature did not have the hearing to determine whether or not you were going to approve these rules or what it entailed. You had more pressing matters in January 2003, in February 2003, in March of 2003. You were all hoping the power was gonna come back on and water was gonna come back on so you could come to session having bathed. These rules were not high on your list and it got lost someplace in the bowels of this building for the last 10 years until Senator Palacios found them last year and sent them to the compiler. And the good compiler wanted to send a message to everybody. Those of you that read the codes, there's usually a note after a section and in the note, the compiler will say, "This is what public law passed, it, how many times it's been amended, it was amended by this and amended by that." But, Madam Speaker, it was very interesting when I looked at these rules because the compiler placed her note at the very beginning of the regulations. The beginning of the regulation, before you even get down to it. She writes, "2012 Note," and I'll read it. "Rulemaking authority for the formulation of gaming control rules and regulations by the Department of Revenue and Taxation is found in Public Law 2652, Section 4, passed on October 17, 2001, which states, quote, 'Notwithstanding any other provision of law, the cockpit license board, together with the Department of Revenue and Taxation, is hereby authorized to promulgate necessary rules and regulations to create a comprehensive regulatory scheme to regulate all gaming activities on Guam, provided that the rules and regulations shall restrict gaming activities to those authorized and licensed on Guam as of August the 1st, 2001,' end of quote." The compiler goes on to say, "Pursuant to this authority, the Department of Revenue and Taxation filed the gaming control regulations with the legislative secretary on January the 3rd, 2003, consisting of rules and regulations now found in Article 1 to 5 herein, C5GCA Section 9100 at Sec. 1, Guam Administrative Adjudication Law. This submission from the Department of Revenue and Taxation stated the following," and she's hinting to us in real bold letters without having bolded it. She goes, "This submission from the Department of Revenue and Taxation stated the following, quote, 'Upon codification of these regulations, Chapter 5 of Title 11 of the Guam Code Annotated will be repealed and reenacted to be replaced by the as regulations,' end of quote. Since when have we abdicated our power as legislators to the Department of Revenue and Taxation to repeal and reenact and replace laws by their regulations?" That's on the note. I'll read further. "And, quote, 'Chapter 29 of Title 22 Guam Code Annotated hereby is hereby repealed in its entirety and reenacted under Chapter 5 of Title 11 Guam Code Annotated,' end of quote." She's pointing out to us in her notes without saying that I'm only the compiler, I'm only supposed to publish it, I'm not supposed to say it's good law or bad law or good rule or bad rule. I'm just pointing out to you as the compiler what I've seen because it is what it is. You have abdicated your authority, or at least they think you abdicated your authority, and they're repealing and reenacting. Is that what the section of the 26 that says, "Notwithstanding they've given the authority to promulgate rules?" Nothing in that. Read that and even with DI reading, you wouldn't be able to find that there's authority in there giving you the authority to repeal and reenact and hold chapters of the law. There was no delegation of that authority and they took it and they put it into rules and regulations and without you looking, without you having hearings... without you having hearings, they promulgated it. But the compiler has pointed it out to us. And she finishes by saying, "However, Section 4 of Public Law 2652 did not, did not, did not authorize the Department of Revenue and Taxation to repeal and reenact existing Guam law." "Section 4 of Public Law 26-52 authorized the Department of Revenue and Taxation only to, quote, 'promulgate necessary rules and regulations to create a comprehensive regulatory scheme to regulate all gaming activities on Guam.'" End of quote. Public Law 2652, Section 4, October 17, 2001. "The Gaming Control Regulations are not codified in the Guam Code Annotated, but placed in this chapter." Because she has questions. It is what it is. It is not law and it is challengeable. Any attempt to base some speculative loan on it is just that. I call the previous question.
On the motion to send Bill 20 back to the committee and there are objections, I'm going to call for the votes. All in favor then to send Bill 20 back to committee, please raise your hand. Motion carries.
Madam Speaker, I request a roll call. They only counted seven. So a roll call.
Three. Three to call. For a roll call vote. Yes. That's what I'm saying, I need three. So we have one call, second call, third call. Roll call. No, to send it back to committee, that's the motion. Roll call on the vote. The clerk had recorded those who actually voted, so.
Point of order, Madam Speaker, so what's that mean? Even though there's three requesting for a roll call, you're going to ignore that request pursuant to the rules and?
So, well, procedurally, of course, the call for a roll call should actually occur before the vote's taken and that wasn't done. That's procedurally. Secondly, a vote was called and there were eight votes. So therefore, the motion then, that was motioned by the
Well, you accepted my motion to?
Let me finish, Senator. And since the vote then was taken and just for purposes in which I would allow it, then it's just the announcement of those who voted then to send back to the committee without doing a roll call.
Point of order, Madam Speaker.
Say your point of order.
But when I requested for a roll call, you said, "There's one." You've accepted my motion calling?
Yes, but I was corrected that it should have been done beforehand.
But you've acknowledged me and you've asked for two other senators to ask for a roll call? And you have three senators asking for a roll call?
Yes, Senator, but then what I'm going to do then, because the purpose of that call was to announce then who actually voted and we will announce without having to call a roll call vote.
And then what happens after you announce the vote?
Then you would get the number eight, necessary.
I understand, but how about my request to have a roll call?
There wouldn't be any need because then you would already have then
Sure, there'd be a need. There's a difference in voting by hand versus voting by roll call. That's why the rules provide that if in the event three members of the legislature are asking, request a roll call, then the chair shall grant that request.
And I've already ruled that we will then go ahead and have the clerks announce the votes, the names of those who voted.
Madam Speaker, can we just recess and come back at 1:00? You're obviously not on the same page with the clerk and so I think we need to take a recess.
No, I'm going to go ahead and have the clerk then. This is what the clerks will do, is to announce the names of those who voted on the motion to send Bill 20 back to the committee.
But procedurally, Madam Speaker, what you're doing is if any senator wishes to change their vote, they're going to need permission from the body to change their vote, being that their vote was already cast. So I'm asking that you, notwithstanding how we voted by show of hands, I'm asking that in the interest of fairness and transparency, that you do this by way of roll call.
Okay. You're right, for transparency. Unless anybody objects, then. Then I'll give everybody an opportunity just in case if anyone would like to change their vote to vote again on roll call. No. It's just basically doing a roll call. May proceed. Senator Tom Adams. Senator Tom Adams, nay. Senator Tony Adams. Senator Tony Adams, nay. Senator Frank Uggins. Senator Frank Uggins, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duaneus. Senator Duaneus, aye. Senator Lim Tiako. Senator Lim Tiako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, absent. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, nay. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, nay. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, nay. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wontat.
Yes.
Speaker Wontat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, nay. The votes for the motion to send Bill 20 back to the committee received eight yea votes, six nay votes and one excuse absence. So the motion carries. We will recess until this afternoon at 2:00 p.m.